I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all of those who have passed away in our community. Also, on the eve of September 11th attacks on our country, let us pause to remember those who tragically lost their lives on that horrific day seventeen years ago.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gohan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Reports, four hearing dates held August 22, August 29, and September 5, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Tax Assessors Reports, four hearing dates to be held September 12 and September 19, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Reports, 2017, 2018, year-to-date July 31 and August 31, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Tax Assessors Results Reports, four hearing dates held July 25, August 1, August 8, August 15, and August 22, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3E Check Received August 8, 2018, from Comcast, in the amount of $256,378.76 for quarterly franchise fee payment.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3F Correspondence Received from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates Incorporated regarding the 2019 financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3G Controllers Report, four-month ending, July 31, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3H Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meetings, held June 20 and July 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3I Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held July 18, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3J Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting, held July 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3K Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting, held July 18, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3L Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held August 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3M Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Lackawanna County Land Bank, held July 13, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3N Minutes of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Board Meetings, held June 4 and July 9, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3O Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Members of Scranton Housing Authority, held July 2, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3P Request and Approval for the Installation of a Streetlight at Connell Street in Hurst Court.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements to make? I have a few. The Friends of the Scranton Public Library will hold a book sale beginning tomorrow, September 11 through September 16 on the second-floor marketplace at the Mall at Steamtown. On Sunday, September 16, at 12 noon, there will be a raising of the flags dedication to Memorial Park. The park is located on Providence Road between Memorial Stadium and Scranton High. The public is invited to attend. And finally, next Monday, September 17, at 5:15 PM, council will hold a public hearing for OECD's 2019 CDBG Home and ESG Programs.
Fourth Order Citizens Participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Gerard Hetman.
Good evening, Council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. To begin this evening, just a reminder that the Remembering Our Fallen National Memorial will be on display at McDade Park through Tuesday, September 11. This is a traveling exhibit that honors all service members killed in action since September 11, 2001. I had a chance to walk through it yesterday, and a very touching and moving experience, very powerful. So many of our men and women in America pay tribute to, through this memorial. It's a great experience for anyone that can make it. So again, on display through tomorrow, dawn to dusk, but just a reminder with that, the annual September 11 memorial service that takes place at McDade Park will be held tomorrow morning, Tuesday, September 11, 8:00 AM. The public is welcomed and encouraged to attend. Second, the Seventh Annual Lackawanna County Senior Health Fair will take place this Friday, September 14, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at PNC Field. The event will feature more than 50 exhibitors, featuring a variety of senior health and wellness services, including flu shots, health screenings, giveaways, refreshments, and much more. The event is free to attend, and parking is also free, so please join us. Of course, we always say every year, this senior fair is open to the public. Anyone who considers themselves a senior is welcomed, along with anyone who may take a relative or a friend there for a ride, possibly a friend, relative, son or daughter. Please come in and enjoy the festivities and learn about senior health and wellness. Third, our Eighth Annual Heroes Day Public Safety Fair will take place Saturday, September 22, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at PNC Field in Music. Normally, that event is held at the county's 911 Center. However, due to ongoing renovations there this year, we had to move the venue, so it will take place at PNC Field. The event features a variety of military vehicles and equipment on display from police, fire, EMS, and again, military organizations and agencies. Fourth, a special commemoration of Vietnam War veterans will take place on Sunday, September 23, 11:00 AM on Courthouse Square. All veterans who served between November 1, 1955, and May 15, 1975 are eligible to receive a commemorative pin at this event. It's part of a national initiative to honor the service of all who served in the Vietnam War. For more information, call 877-387-9951, or visit www.vietnamwar50th.com. Fifth, this is a really neat initiative that we just found out about last week, but it's a great program, and we think it's going to make a big impact in our area among a growing demographic for this service. It's called Parents for a Second Time, and it's being led by Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging. It's a support network, we'll call it, not just one group, but it's an ongoing initiative to support folks who may be a little bit older in life, who are raising children, in many cases for the second time. That often means grandparents raising their grandchildren, the absence of a parent, but it could mean someone who's adopted a younger child, maybe a niece and nephew, or grandniece, grandnephew, whatever the case may be. But there's a series of groups that meet around the county as part of this program. The One in Scranton meets each third Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, at the Albright Memorial Library. There are at least two other meeting groups around the county for folks that live further out, and there may be more in the future. For information about the program, contact Rebecca Munley at 570-963-6740, or munleyr@lackawannacounty.org. And again, it's a very important program. This is something that the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania has encouraged counties to support through their human service departments, so we're happy to see this take root in Lackawanna County. Hope to see lots of folks come out and use that service, and hopefully makes a good impact in their lives. Last but not least here, the Penn State Master Gardeners Fall Mum Sale will take place on Friday, September 14, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Courthouse Square. For more information, call 570-963-6842, or email lackawannamg@psu.edu. That's all I have for tonight, but just two housekeeping notes. First, the county's budget in compliance with the county's formal charter will be introduced for public review in mid-October. So the next time I see you guys, we'll probably be at the end of the month of October, so I'll have some information then on the budget, as it has been presented at that time by the county commissioners, so just a heads up on that. And also, shortly here tonight, I have to leave to attend a different meeting in Jefferson Township. Our schedule's a little bit different with the Labor Day holiday pushes some things back and changes us up a little bit, so I have to leave after the next few speakers. But thank you as always, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. John Foley?
John Foley. Gentlemen, good to see you again. I'll try not to take up too much of your time. I have three issues that I'd like to speak to you about. I wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for the article in this morning's paper about the former boathouse and whether there's an ethical violation by a city employee. I will tell you that I've talked to a number of people, and frankly, I don't know. The solicitor, the attorney for Mr. Hinton is an advocate. I have no reason to believe that he doesn't truly believe his opinion, that there is no ethical violation. I've been informed that the state believes that the city ethics rules hold. I have other people who tell me that they're not sure whether there was an ethical violation, regardless even taking the city's rules. So I'm at a conundrum on this. So let's see if we can try and resolve it. The city has a board of ethics. How about if I just send the board a letter, asking the board to look at the matter once and for all, and resolve it for all parties? Then we don't have to worry about anybody's opinion. Let the board of ethics... So I'll probably try and get something out within the next couple of days. I sent you, gentlemen, a letter. Over a week ago, I addressed two things in the letter. I addressed that in 2017, the city gave the sewer authority an easement. Attached to the easement was a handwritten deed. I have read that deed, and frankly, I'm not a lawyer. I know enough to be dangerous, but I'm clearly not enough to be competent, but as I read that deed, and as I talk to other people, there appears to be a problem, that the land or anything on the land cannot be rented, or leased. If that is the case, then that property in question, the former boathouse, can't have a lease. If it's determined that that's the case, and Mr. Hinton, in good faith, expended any money to acquire furniture or to rehab it, I suspect he's going to sue you, and he should. The second issue in there, I came into my possession, I did not take the photos, but in August, DPW people are working at the former boathouse. August 2018, the one that was leased in August 2017. So more than a year later, I have the city, what appears to be doing cleanup work, couple of trucks and people, working at the boathouse. I did not look at the lease, but I can get it. If the lease does not specifically say the responsibility for the cleanup before Mr. Hinton does anything, then that's Mr. Hinton's responsibility. And if it is, then you guys need to deal with it. I don't mean deal with it the picture of the city employee, I have other pictures. That it's not the employee, if there's a problem there, it's whoever instructed the employee to do it. Now, I outlined in a letter a couple of things I would, I think you should do. If you don't do it, then ultimately, I'm going to have to do it. I'd rather you guys get out in front of this thing. If there's a problem there, fix it. Third matter, it's probably well-reported within the city, that I've embarked on other things. I specifically, under right-to-know request, I have requested permit, all the permits that have been issued for the last four and a half years. I've looked at the licenses, every license. I don't think I got them all, but the Office of Open Records will help me determine that. But I'm looking at both population of information in common. This again was prompted by articles in the Scranton Times, that there are contractors that are having difficulty. I have interviewed a lot of people, not just in Lackawanna County. I conducted the interviews, and leads me to believe that there are problems, that there is not a uniformity and consistency within the licensure permitting process. Since I don't have all the documents yet, I can't tell you specifically, but let me give you a hypothetical. Let's say an individual only has a landscaper's license, but he's given a general contractor's license to do a project. That would seem to be somewhat of a problem. I don't even mention that because I don't have the document yet, but I would encourage you to get out in front of it, because if I find significant issues, I have no faith that the city will do anything about it if I correspond, so that means I'm going to have to send everything to the state and have them communicate with you. With that, gentlemen, I must go to Music Lake and have dinner with my wife. Gentlemen, have a great evening.
Thank you. Les Spiller?
Good evening, Council, Les Spiller, city resident homeowner, taxpayer. Last meeting I attended in June, I neglected to say something. It was on the news, Delta Airlines will not allow pit bull service dogs on their airplanes. What does that tell you? A big company like Delta Airlines knows how dangerous pit bulls are. And on that subject again, about a week or so later, it was on the news, a family in Philly had five pit bulls. Three of them attacked their two-year-old child and killed that child. What more do I have to tell you people to convince you that these dogs are dangerous dogs? Here's one of the biggest companies around, Delta Airlines, won't allow them on their planes, and the poor two-year-old boy lost his life, killed by three pit bulls. What more do I have to say, with all the other proof I've given you? Something has to be done. Next thing, 5D, the fireworks ordinance? I spoke to the mayor already. I had a huge problem. July 3, it was, not even the 4th, it was July 3, neighbor crossed the street from me, from 5:00 in the evening till 10 o'clock that night, was setting off illegal fireworks. They're legal to buy, but state law says you have to be 150 feet from a residence. He's not 150 feet from residence. My dog's been terrorized since then. Even when she hears thunder, she goes crazy, and she never was bothered by thunder. And I went to my neighbor, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry." I didn't call the police, but next year I will. But I spoke to the mayor, he said, "Yeah, we have to do something." So I think you should add an amendment to that, to 5D, helping out the residents in this area, because it's out of control. Those fireworks cannot be set off in residential areas. Well, he said, "It's..." It was on the news, state law says you have to be 150 feet from a residence. Wokesbury already passed something. They took the bull by the horns right away. So I hope you people, you could advance it tonight, but I hope you talk about and make an amendment to this, where you can't set these off in residential areas. My daughter's brand-new car was covered by debris the next day. My house and garage were covered. I told my neighbor, "You're lucky it didn't burn my residence down." All I got was, "Oh, I'm sorry." Something has to be done. And I spoke to many people that had the same complaints, but nobody else will come here. But I did speak to the mayor, and the mayor said, "We have to do something." So I don't know if you want to get together with him. Next thing, over the summer, I guess there was a meeting with the zoning board about that new development they want to put in North Scranton. I drove by a few houses up there, just a couple houses, they're North Scranton against the housing complex, or whatever they call it. Nobody wants anything in the city. Everybody's, "Oh, not in my backyard." This would be good for the city, if it comes before council, I don't know if it will or not, but I think council should pass this. I know somebody that owns a garage in that area, and the one gentleman was here complaining, "I only have five cars a day going by my house." If they put that in, I'll have 200 cars. Well, this gentleman that owns a garage, he said, "He's a liar." And he is a liar. There's more than five cars a day going up there to the Vo-Tec every day, when school's in service. He has a lot more than five cars going by his house every day. So he's a liar. This should be passed if it comes before council.
I don't believe it will come before council. I think it'll just be in front of the zoning board.
Oh, okay. Another thing, it was about two years ago, maybe, all of Dorothy Street was paved. Now, I don't know if it's a gas company or a water company, they're digging the whole street up, from the beginning all the way down to the community center. I hope they're not just going to patch where they're digging. I hope they're going to repave that whole street. As I said, it was only done two years ago.
Yeah, there's a five-year law, so if it's paved, if it's dug up within five years, after it's paved, they have to do a curb to curb.
It's two, three years at the most.
Keep an eye on that, yeah, they have to pave the whole thing.
The length of the street, I don't know what they're putting in there, because it's, every day it's closed down, Dorothy Street, so, all right, well, I'll fill you in on that. Lastly, last time I was here, I mentioned about North Main Avenue, from Wood Street to Green Ridge, about how bad it was. Councilman Rogan, I think you asked to have a letter sent, have you heard, the Penn Dot, have you heard anything?
I don't think we've received a reply. Did we get a reply?
Yeah, they're going to...
I know they did some patching, but it needs a, that has to be paved.
We got a reply that they would do it before the end of paving season this year, that that was already on their list to do.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, good, yeah. It's awful, I mean, they made it a little better by patching it, but it's still, it's like driving on a washboard, really bad washboard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bernie, you're up.
Good evening, Council, Bernie McGirl, 941 North Irving Avenue in Scranton's wonderful Hill Section. And I'm here tonight to talk about rain gardens. I got a flyer I'm going to give you guys. Well, with all the rain we're having this year, we thought it'd be a good thing to encourage people to install rain gardens around their home. It's a great way to help to protect the Lackawanna River. We have a small grant from the Pennsylvania American Water Company's statewide environmental grant program, and it's going to enable the LRC to give some money away to folks who would like to build rain gardens in their, at their home, or a small business. A rain garden is a great way to disconnect your downspout, so it doesn't go into the sewer lateral, and it provides an alternative from discharging it where it'd run down your driveway and out into the curb line. The idea is, we want to reduce the amount of rain runoff that's going into the sanitary system that causes the combined sewer overflows. The city and the water company have inherited the federal court jurisdiction that was developed by the sewer authority to make $150 million of improvements to prevent the combined sewer overflows in Scranton that have been polluting the Lackawanna River for the last 40 or 50 years. So this is a great way for the individual in the neighborhood to help reduce that flow of stormwater, and put it in a safe location on their property. The idea is to divert the rainwater and get it to a low-lying spot on your yard. Not everybody's yard is going to have that capacity. Some places up on East Mountain might be all rock and very steep, you're not going to be able to retain water, but other neighborhoods, and there might be some places up there that it'd work as well. But we have a process, we're asking folks to give us a call, 347-6311, or you can visit our website, www.lrca.org, and check out our rain garden program. We'll come out, I'd like to interview each one of the homeowners, and determine if they have a location on their property that's appropriate to divert their rain leaders into, and we have a list of plants and a procedure that they could engage in. If they're got some homeowner skills, some do-it-yourselfers, and they want to do the work themselves, if they've got some gardening skills, we can work with them. We can match, right now, up to about $500. So we're looking for projects that'd be in the range of $1,000 to $1,200 to $1,500, and we can reimburse selected homeowners up to $500 of that. So we look forward to getting some calls. We have enough to do 10 homes, and right now, we have five or six people who have applied and who've been approved. So we still have four openings, so it's going to be first-come, first-served basis, but we wanted to extend it to everybody in the listening audience, and hopefully, we can have a few more rain gardens in the Lackawanna Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How you doing? Ken Norton, happen to live over in the Lincoln Heights section, and what's the conversation tonight is, we have an issue with the drainage, with the sewerage. The Scranton Sewer Authority, when it was in existence, went ahead and stated that the sewerage, the, are the old brick and mortar, which are over 100 years old. To add to that, up in the 1,300 block of Rundle Street, there's a pump house. And that pump house operates very well. Go ahead and give you the whole situation. At Main Avenue, what we have is a bottleneck. There's a number of sewer lines that run into one undersized sewer line. So between the pump house pushing and the bottleneck down below, what we have is, if our check valves don't kick in in our residence, you wind up getting raw sewerage through your floor drains, through your sinks, through whatever. So anyways, I'm basically here to make it part of the record again, to see if there is a solution between American Water, the city, which is supposed to have the storm drains, okay? My honest opinion at this particular point in time, the easiest fix would be to go ahead and replace the bottleneck and fix that down to the sewer plant, and then when you folks come to an agreement on the stormwater, it can actually be addressed then. But to give you a little bit of the timeframe on this, I bought my house in '84, and I've probably been chasing this problem off and on since, say, the early '90s. So we do have a problem, Rundle Street, Watson Street, I did hear, which would be down on Reynolds Street, that's Taylor, that's, but there is a sewer issue that has to be addressed, and that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed, and I talked to Mr. Norton on the phone about this and Pennsylvania American Water, but I do think if we could try to get a meeting between the city engineer, Pennsylvania American Water, I'd like to be there myself, invite Mr. Norton and any of the other neighbors, and we'll pick a place, but this is a huge issue over there, and maybe we want to invite Penn Dot as well, to try to sort this out once and for all.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Fay Ferranas, Scranton. Mr. Rogan, I understand you're a father with a son?
Daughter.
Pardon me?
Daughter.
A daughter, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
That is a little girl. Okay, I gave you then photos that I wanted to discuss. When the University of Scranton built the South Side Complex there on Broadway and Third Avenue, they took a sewer out, and they replaced it with another sewer, which is fine, but that's all the fill it leaves, that they never clean, but they never replaced the one that would drain the water. So now the water is going around the corner and sitting in huge amounts of water in front of the access, handicapped access onto the sidewalk. And when people ride their bikes, they even have to stop and pick up their bike to put it on the curb, because they can't ride. So I would like someone to please contact the University of Scranton. I've called, but I've gotten no response from them about what they're going to do. They figure it's fine, and they said that was always like that. It was never like that. It was never like that. Because you know, Mr. Gunn, I ride my bike down there, and I never had a problem, you're probably familiar with that area. I'd like that checked. And also, when they have games down there, like they've had them for the last couple weeks on a Sunday evening, there's a bike lane that they built, right in front of the complex, and the buses parked there from University of Scranton, and they let their diesels run all night, you know, during the whole game with the air conditioning going. And I believe the law says it can only do that fifteen minutes, but they're not even supposed to be there. They're parked in the bike lane in front of the stadium, and they're supposed to park behind the Radisson Hotel until the game is over, and then go back and pick them up, and they've never done this yet. So it's a safety hazard, too, when you're driving down there, because it's such a narrow street now, because they narrowed it with the widening of the sidewalks. So that's another issue that has to be addressed. I've contacted Jack Sweeney, I understand he's very busy, and I can understand that, but something really has to be done about this. Also, on Elm Street, see Bellevue where I live is, is a cave area. The house behind me caved in, the house on the street from me, the kitchen caved in, my garage caved in. So it's all around Bellevue, Seventh Street, Broadway, Elm Street, Luzerne Street, the whole corners of it, are all have signs that say trucks only ten ton. But on Elm Street, next to Danny's Auto there, I believe it's Danny's, there's a, there's a landfill, I don't know what it is, about forty or fifty dump trucks come a day, and they go in there. And on the sign on the bridge, they changed it. I don't know who changed it, that's what I wanna know. Who changed the sign? From ten ton, which is by law, from the ordinance that I had passed in nineteen ninety-five, banning trucks in this area, because it's a cave area, they changed it from ten ton to fifteen ton. So, so those trucks are able to go. But here's the, here's the problem, I understand, next spring, they're gonna fix that bridge, and it's gonna be tied up for quite a while. So, those trucks are now gonna go over Broadway, by the, by the ball field, and then turn up Third Avenue, all past all those homes there. All those residential homes are gonna have all those heavy trucks going by their house in a cave area. So something has to be addressed about this De Naples property. This is all De Naples. So De Naples has a lot of control in the city with the mayor. So something has to be done, because he has to, the mayor has to represent the city, people and the residents of the city, because that ordinance was passed in nineteen ninety-five, and the police have only stopped the one truck since nineteen ninety-five. It's a three hundred dollar fine, or a thousand dollar fine, depending. Some of these trucks are over ten ton with nothing in them. So, they wanna charge people a hundred dollars for high grass, but they get that much money for stopping a truck. The other day, a neighbor stopped, the policeman was there, and he turned the truck around to go back, which is fine, but the neighbor asked him, "How come you didn't find him?" He said, "Well, the GPS told him to go the wrong way." He said, "There's still a law, that sign says you can't go." He says, "Suppose I went through a stop sign, would you stop me?" And the policeman said, "Yes, of course." And he said, "Well, but suppose my GPS told me to go that way, they go through it." So the point is, they can't just be turning them around, they have to find them. No matter, most of these trucks, GPS takes them the wrong way. I stopped a truck the other day. Please address this with the police chief, I've already done this, but Clark Summit has trucks stopped all the time, and they're making a fortune, and Scranton could use the money. Now, another thing, as far as the dogs are concerned, you could talk to any animal trainer, any vet, okay? It's not the dogs, it's the owners. It's the owners, it's the owners. So please, would you check into this? The True Friends Animal Welfare Shelter is a no-kill shelter. I would recommend, everybody looking them up, they're in Montrose, the True Friends Welfare Animal Shelter. They don't kill animals like the Griffin Pond Humane Society. Those people shouldn't be getting a penny from anybody, because they have six million dollars in their bank, and they only have four employees, and they're killing animals. So thank you very much, I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, counsel, Lee Morgan. Hope you guys are really rested. What I have here tonight is Kevin Hagerty, a state representative, came up with an idea here. He wants anyone who files for a PFA to get a drug and alcohol screen. And to be really honest with you, I really think that that'd be a good idea. But, you know, it's just a shame that as his tenure as a state representative comes to an end, he's finally determined that he's found an issue, I guess that he has some personal experience with, to need to be highlighted. But there's a lot of things he's missed in that law. In that law, custody goes to the person granted the PFA, and in that issue, that custody issue could languish in the courts for an extended period of time, causing parental alienation of the other parent. And I really think that the state legislature needs to take a good, hard look at that law again. And I also believe that there should be some need for fact to issue a protection from abuse order. I also think there should be a statewide study of abuse in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to determine who the abusers are, whether they're male or female, what the causes for that abuse are, and what some of the solutions would be. Because, believe it or not, we really have a big problem in family court. Thank God I'm not young enough to have to wade through those waters, but I've sat through a lot of PFA hearings, and believe me, we're really challenged by the people we've elected as judges, because they're former assistant district attorneys and district attorneys. And in my opinion, they've had a very strong working relationship with the wrong people, and they're not open-minded, and they're really violating their discretion as a judge. But they figure, by the time, if anybody gets to the high court, especially in the custody issues, because in my opinion, you need a final order. So if this thing languishes in court for two, three, four years, your parental bond to your children could be completely destroyed. And so by the time you get to the high court to intervene, there's nothing left to save. And, you know, the sad part is that we elect people to the legislature off the street, and they have no idea what's going on, and they never really learn what's going on. And it really does a disservice to our community, and the people they should be serving. And the other thing I have here is, you know, with the city that's in the financial shape we're in, and some of the problems we've experienced over a period of time, I really think that council members and the mayor should weekly go to the city webpage and explain to the residents the work they've done for them this week. Like, you know, not, not to be over the top, but as the mayor, what did you do for the residents of the city this week to make their life better? And for a councilman, who did you meet in the community, and what did you work on this week to make their life better? And not, not in a mean-spirited way, but I think it had helped people come to grasp the reality that the government may really be working for them. You know, the other thing I have here is, a gentleman got up here today, and he talked about introducing something to a record. There is no record. That's another problem. I mean, we stopped keeping minutes here, so there's no record. And I think that for any resident to come and petition its government for any action, there should be a record. And it's a really disservice to the community not to preserve a city record for the residents who come here and try to interact with their government to get action on any issue. Because, to be honest with you, it wouldn't only benefit them, it would have benefited council members who can go into the record and look what was said and what action was asked for. So give that some thought. Thank you.
Nobody looks over, Sundberg. During your prolonged vacation, all the rain gave me extra time to figure out my next attack, uh, counsel. I'm not so mad at you today, so... I have to read this, because I have a couple figures. I find the city administration responsible for five hundred sixty-six delinquent properties owing two-point-six million. Two-point-six million. This goes on year after year after year. James Talarico got six houses rented out. He owes over thirty thousand dollars. Nothing is done to the man. Nothing to collect taxes. I paid mine twice one year, can't get the money back. Here's a man that got six houses and not paying nothing. Of course, that was when, in two thousand and five. Scranton Investors on the twenty-nine-hundred Boulevard. They owed four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, year after year after year, and I don't even know what happened. Thomas Hill at Linden and Eighth, he owes sixty-one thousand. Same thing, over and over, nothing's collected from him. Charles Jefferson of Allentown, right across the street, that building is all lit up, he's collecting rents. He hadn't paid taxes in four, five years, he owes a hundred and six thousand. Why, why is this? It's just not right, that people lose their house for a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, and these people get by year after year after year with no end to it. Right here, when I was doodling, I got seventy-two names that were in the delinquents. Every one of them is an LLC, a realty, or a developer, and I didn't look real good, I just wrote, seventy-two names, they owe... I got it written down. Eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to the city and back taxes, that's just seventy-two people. And this, you just don't do nothing about it. Some of these Cedar, Cedar Associates, they have ten properties, they owe fifty-three thousand dollars. This whole list is like that. It's very evident that the collection agency doesn't do a damn thing except bother people about a sewer bill or something. Two million dollars out there, and nobody's doing a thing about it. I know a house, in fact, I used their garage, I used their garage to store a car. Two years ago, they hadn't paid taxes in eight years, and nothing is ever done. She gets letters and just doesn't pay nothing. Your idea to compensate for all these losses is more millage, raise the taxes. Don't, you don't do nothing to protect the people of this city from... God, they're nothing but deadbeats. In my opinion, all you have to do is give a little donation to, to the city, state, at campaign money, and you're allowed to coast for years. Well, before I have a heart attack over it, in closing, did anybody realize that the newspaper raised their rates a hundred and eighty-four dollars a year? You know, that's a hell of a raise. That just shows how well they seem to be doing. A hundred and eighty-four dollars extra. I'm sure there's a lot of people out there could well spend a hundred and eighty-four dollars better than the newspaper. I don't know why they don't cut some of the staff off, like Kelly and Cole and Pat McKinnon, instead of raising the rates, because it's gonna be counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Yes, tonight I'd like to talk about one thing, a four-letter word, rain. What it did to this city, what, a week ago, two weeks ago? What it did to the East Mountain? I'm sure what it did to the West Mountain? And if you get the paper, you know what it did over on Wyoming Avenue, on the seventeen-hundred block of Wyoming Avenue. May I ask if you'd respond to, how many of you went over to see the damage on, in that seventeen-hundred block?
Of Wyoming Avenue? I was over there.
I wasn't over there, but I did talk to Mr. Young. Yeah, I talked to Ms. Young sir all the time, so I was in conversation with him during that.
Well, I, Sunday before last, a young lady from church asked me for a ride home, and she lives a few blocks away from there. So I went over, and I took a look at Ryerson, and I parked on Delaware Avenue, and I walked up. And I would suggest each of you walk up there. The youngs, you know, you talk about quality of life, you talk about upholstered, how terrible it is for neighborhoods to have an upholstered sofa on a porch. But can you imagine? You can't. I don't think you can, unless you go out there and take a look on what's happened to the quality of life for those people. And what's probably the same thing in, you know, up in Kaiser Valley and other places. I mean, there were countless people. And some of it could be done, solved easily, if we put our mind to it, but I'm assuming that the Arcata study is still in limbo and has not been received. That was a study that the business administrator, Bolzoni, said would be done in nine months, and here we are. We don't need the study. If anybody, if the five of you split up the city and went around when it was raining, you could see what it is, and a lot of it. I had water this time. I had water, when Ivan came, because they were doing, working on East Mountain Road, and the water came up, because they had blocked everything, and it came up into my house, not from outs, I mean, just from the streets. Something's gotta be done. Simple things. Curbs. There are two drains on my corner. Does the water reach it? No. That's why I got, I got rained, because we didn't street, sweep the streets. Still there. I, if anybody would like to move, I'd be happy to show you what washed onto my sidewalks. For years after that Seymour Avenue was paved, there were no curbs at all. I finally, in two thousand and five, got some, some curbs put in, but they're low. I went over, I drove around just across the highway, where, again, we, the city paved, paid to pave, say, Leslie, Leslie Drive, which had been paved, repaved by a utility within the last five years. So it really wasn't a big job. But they have seven-inch curbs, and they have lips on the, on the driveways. So many properties on East Mountain Road, including my own, we don't have the drains, so everything comes into our yards and saturates us. And you could look at my, the sidewalks, when my mother was still there, and there were none. All that water came in, the sidewalks are sunken, not because they weren't cared for, but because they kept getting flooded every time it rained, and every time the, in the, in the spring, this, all that salty water from the roads came in and totally obliterated the, the concrete. So there's simple things that could be done. So there's simple things that could be done. Lenny was here a couple weeks ago, asking for a simple thing. There's a retention pond that hasn't been dredged. Why? I mean, that's very simple. If the water's retained someplace else, or it's directed, again, with using curbs, and it's directed down drains where there are drains, but all the areas that need drains... You know, I think, frankly, I think stormwater's going to take this city into bankruptcy, because it is really bad. And again, I walked up Ryerson, and I think one of those garages that's eaten out from underneath is, I think, holding up the retention wall on Ryerson. You just walk along there, and you see, like, three in a row, and then you look at the poor youngs, and it's... Something has got to be done. And I wait for the answer. I could have the privilege to ask one more question, though, is the agreement when you all, well, not all of you, but most of you, agreed to sell the Scranton Sewer Authority to PAWC, that it was stormwater was either going to be taken over by the city. We do have the permit, and why DEP hasn't socked us with a big fine, I don't know. But the deal was either the water company, or somebody else, or the city would do it, or a third contractor, I shouldn't say the water company. You never, ever passed legislation for, to give that job to another company. So who's doing stormwater?
Currently, DPW is doing stormwater. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Number one, well, that's my number one. Under Section 5 E and F, please include addresses, the area, sectors, and purposes of a lot of these ordinances. It just kind of is a vague description that we're giving rights to certain entities, and they're really not specific as to what it's for, or what area it's in, or what have you. And once again, I have a message for the group that seems to want to sue over everything, especially the non-property tax issues. Kind of slipped my mind over. I'll have to refresh myself, the numbers of the legislation, but please sue for tax-exempt excess definitions instead of their current pursuits. It's really ridiculous that we are 35% tax-exempt, and it keeps getting piled on to the property taxes as opposed to us being able to collect alternative taxes and put them in our pocket instead of in some attorney's pocket, or whatever, and pay our bills for a change. Once again, there's a project here with gaming funds, and I'd like to remind everybody that at least more than 10 years ago, it was supposed to be for the elderly and property tax relief and so forth, and somehow, a major portion of it has just been funneled off. And of course, it's possibly paving streets that need it, but also people that are much more well-heeled than some of the people that come in here with complaints about property tax. And today in the paper, I guess it was DCED money or something, half of what was expected. And I have a question for the mayor and council, and possibly a suggestion. Are you putting up with angry, frustrated residents for another's political success, basically in Washington, so they can provide tax cuts and so forth, to 83% of which went to 1% of the population of the United States? And we all have to pay our taxes, but certainly, certainly as these grants and so forth get reduced, and Social Security gets reduced, year in and year out, Medicare's paying 10 cents on a dollar, maybe someday you'll have a mother-in-law, or father-in-law, or sister, or brother, or mother, sitting on your couch, unable to even afford medical care, possibly getting sicker as you sit there and look at them. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address Council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Well, before I get started, I want to say welcome back, Kathy. Thank you. It's nice to see you here again. Kathy was out for a while, and she's back joining us, and just our whole staff does a fantastic job. They're really the lifeblood that makes our office go, so I just want to welcome back. It's nice seeing you again. Getting back on a couple items. Mr. Spindler, I think, is gone, but he had an issue about the fireworks and what's on our agenda tonight. Unfortunately, legislation is, it's only as good as the piece of paper it's written on if it's not being enforced. Some of the issues he spoke about with the fireworks situation in his neighborhood sounds like more of an enforcement problem. If there's already a law on the books that won't allow fireworks to be set off within 150 foot of any structure, and that's not, that's not being honored, well, then that sounds like an issue for the police department that needs to come out and take care of it. Because there is already, the way the legislation's written is pretty stringent, that fireworks cannot be set off within 150 feet of any structure. So that really limits it down, or on city property. So you can't even go to a street, an alley. You can't go to a neighborhood park. All those places are off-limits to set off fireworks. So right now, as this legislation stands, if it's being filed and enforced, I think it's good legislation. Some issues that were taken care of over the break that I haven't been able to update everybody on. There's a dangerous intersection at the 2600 block of Pittston Avenue. If anybody's unfamiliar with this situation, it is where one lane turns into two lanes. And what happens is somebody's coming up, and they're not paying attention. That one way, if you're in the right-hand lane, you just drive right into oncoming traffic. There's some minor signage there, but in my opinion, and based on some of the accidents that have been there over the years, it's just not enough. So we did get PennDOT to give us some new signage, some new reflectors, and just to make that more, more of in-your-face to drivers, to oncoming traffic. They're also going to do a study here to see if there actually needs to be more enforcement done, and just more, make the traffic more aware of the upcoming situation. So I'll keep you guys updated on that, but as of right now, there's going to be some updated, larger signs with reflectors at that intersection. Also, some basins, rain has been terrible, terrible, and, you know, our infrastructure for handling it is not very good. We just aren't, we just cannot handle it, and the stuff that we have needs to be cleaned out and cleaned out regularly. There's been two basins that I know have been taken care of that have come to my attention. One was at the end of Powell Court. That was taken care of two days before this weather hit, the weather that rained, and the people there were very thankful, because that was, when I took a look at that, not only was it blocked, but it was just right up to the grate. The whole thing was just covered. And it was in a back alley. It was probably out of sight, out of mind type of situation, and the citizens there and the residents just put up with that for too long, and I'm glad they were able to pick up the phone and get in touch with us. American Water Company was out there quick to take care of it, because it was part of their responsibility, and it was taken care of, and did some follow-up during the rain, and they didn't have any flooding issues in that particular part. Also, there has been a drain basin issue that's been fixed on Church Street. Again, Water Company was out there to take care of that. And there's also a follow-up item that I will have more information on when I get it. There needs to be some milling done on that street just to offset, just the way the road lies. It kind of tends to pool water up in one section away from the drainage. So even though the drain's open, there might still be a stagnant water situation. So once I get update from DPW on the millage of that street, I'll make sure to pass that on. On our agenda tonight, I'm very happy to see some legislation on the street sign project. I'm glad to see this going forward. It's, we've all talked about it. We all know it's something that needed to be done, and I'm hoping within the next couple months to get the street project off the ground and getting some of these signs changed. You know, just for instance, my wife is from the Pittston area, and sometimes we go to visit family, and I'll tell you what, those signs are fantastic. They're brand-new, they're up, they're out there. I don't know my way around there, but I tell you what, I can look at a street sign and know exactly where I'm going and what street I'm on. That's the type, that's the type of street signs, and just the infrastructure that we need for our citizens and for our visitors to the city. Because right now, you know, I'll be the first to say I think it's a disgrace, even going to parts of the city that I do know, in Upper South Side or West Side, you know? They just need to be there. It's just something, it's a basic city service that I think we need to provide. What else do we have? There's so much going on. Okay, so I haven't weighed in officially on the coffee shop situation, and I know that's been going on. Now, let me tell you this. It's been in the paper, there's been many articles about it. As we know, our Lips Director, Mr. Hinton, wants to open a coffee shop in the old Bull House in Naug. Now, this has been going back and forth with us, and it appears that all the, in his application, all the checks, you know, they might have hit the right boxes. The galley of it, I don't know, but it looks like his application was filled out correctly. It was announced correctly. He did everything he needed to do to take care of this. With that being said, I still think it's bad optics. You know, there's, there's, there's an eyeball test to everything, and when you see a city employee getting in business with the city, you know, that always, that always raises, that always raises a red flag and a concern. So while it appears that everything was done correctly, and I say appears, because I've been, we've been bouncing this back off against our solicitor back and forth, and it just doesn't pass the optic test for me. That's what I'm saying. And I am for, and I know, I know Mr. Gaughan and several other councilmen will be bringing this up as well, but I'm definitely in favor for any kind of ethic code amendment that we would need to do, because, you know, some things just, some things just don't sit right. And this is one that just doesn't pass the optic test or the eyeball test to me. Lastly, I know Mr. Rogan hit on this with September 11th tomorrow. Again, guys, what, let's just, let's just keep the family of the fallen in our thoughts. You know, I send all my love I have to those families. What a horrific day that we can all remember. It was one of those flashbulb memory days where we can remember everything we were doing that morning. And, and again, just, just to show you that, you know, the first responders, God bless them, they're, they're out there. They don't know who you are, and you don't know who they are, but they'll be there for you in a second and be willing to give their life to help yours. So let's all, let's all remember that, and, and again, let's never forget the tragedy that befell on us September 11th. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, just to quickly follow up on what Marie brought up with the storm drains. Mrs. Reed, would we be able to send a request to DPW asking for a list of all storm drains that they're responsible for? Also, regarding Mr. Hinton's proposed coffee shop at Naug Park, this whole legal back-and-forth is just ridiculous to me. In my opinion, it doesn't matter whether the state ethics code preempts the city's or not. The city's Scranton has an ethics code, and it should be followed. Either Mr. Hinton wants to be the director of license and inspection, or he wants to run a coffee shop. It's my opinion that he should not be permitted to do both, but that's a decision that will ultimately fall on the mayor. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yeah, touching on that subject, the Naug Park issue. At Council's request, we asked our solicitor for an opinion if there is a conflict between the city's ethics code and the code adopted by the state. So in typical bureaucratic fashion, the state authored an ethics code in 1998, and then put in the caveat that if the city code was enacted prior to 1998, and ours was in 1976, then the state code would supersede the local code. However, if the city code was enacted after 1998, even if it was more restrictive, then it would become the code that guides the city. Typical government nonsense. With that said, I would be in favor of amending our code, even slightly if needed, effectively creating a new code and allowing Scranton's more restrictive code to take precedence, or reviewing a recent ordinance like the one from the City of Reading that Councilman Gaughan brought to our attention during our caucus. While it won't affect this matter, would clear up any future questions as to what code should be used. But quite frankly, all of this is just corrective action. In my simplistic viewpoint, I really don't care, as Councilman Donahue said, that the current code is not what legally binds this issue. To me, it doesn't matter if this issue is determined to be legal. Something being legal, something adhering to the letter of the law, does not always make it the right thing to do. We are elected officials, and along with appointed officials, as well as employees of the city, particularly cabinet members, we should be held to a different standard, to a higher standard. What guides us shouldn't be if something is legal to do. What should always guide us is if something is the right thing to do. In all honestly, honesty, I'm extremely disappointed that the mayor has allowed this ever to get this far. At the end of the day, the mayor must decide if he wants his members of his cabinet to be fully dedicated to their position with the city, or if they should be allowed to seek outside business opportunities using city assets. On the stormwater issue, obviously, this was a big topic of discussion tonight. The storms in August clearly show beyond a shadow of doubt that we are not prepared as a city to deal with stormwater with the present arrangement. There is no doubt that city employees responded as best they could to the severe emergency conditions, but we need a plan, and we need it now. So I am requesting that the representatives of Arcata finally be invited to a public caucus, or possibly a work session in the very near future, to discuss the status of the study that they have been working on for months and months and months, to give us some preliminary findings if appropriate, and hopefully create a dialogue that would allow us to get all on the same page to get this thing done. I remain confident that we can ultimately come up with a long-term plan that will be proactive instead of reactive in our handling of stormwater, but the clock is ticking. Our friends, our neighbors, and our family members have been affected by stormwater and are suffering. So we need to act, and we need to act soon. One final subject, I want to talk a little bit about the Scranton bypass to Clark Summit. This is the $170 million Scranton bypass as proposed by the Turpite Commission and PennDOT. In my opinion, we do not need another ill-conceived and unnecessary road construction project. They are asking all of us to buy into a project that will be taking people's homes, most likely not pay for itself, ever. It will not create additional growth opportunities, and is a project that takes traffic away from the city of Scranton, and that is never a good thing for the current or future economic development of the city. Again, all of this to save a few minutes on a morning or evening commute for a few people. If there's $170 million floating around available in funds, we should not be creating and expanding the highway system. We should be rebuilding our existing roads and bridges and infrastructure. If there's $170 million around, I'm sure the city of Scranton could identify many projects, including stormwater, that would rebuild our existing infrastructure without the need to build one new road. We can even dedicate some of that money to undoing the many wrong-headed decisions made on some of the state roads within the city, roads that were designed to move cars quickly through our downtown and our neighborhoods at the peril of pedestrians, and even the few bicyclists that will brave our streets. So to our neighbors in Clark Summit who may lose your homes, in the name of questionable progress, I want you to know that I stand with you on this issue, and that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Gaughan, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilman Rogan on the birth of his daughter, and wish him and his wife and new daughter all the best. Just a couple citizens' requests over the month of August. 1207 North Main Avenue, Mrs. Reed, can we double-check again on if this property is on the demolition list, and if so, when is it scheduled to be demolished? I've been in contact with one resident that lives right next door, and a hole has opened up on the border of this property and his that's become very dangerous, and the house is in horrible condition. He was told it was on the demolition list, but we just need to confirm that. Also, Mrs. Ann Robinson, who has come to these meetings several times about 803, 805, 808, and 809 Hampton Street in West Scranton. 808 and 809 are listed as vacant lots. She's complained numerous times that the lots are not being taken care of. So I have reached out to Ralph Pappas from the county to see if there's any way we can get those placed in the land bank. Just to touch on stormwater for a minute, I have several questions on the Merrifield Avenue Pumping Station. Uh, right after the storm flooding in August, I met with some residents in that area, and to say that, you know, they were devastated is an understatement. Um, and this isn't anything new. Every time we get a heavy rain, they get absolutely, their, their houses get flooded. It's unbelievable. Uh, so I would like to know about the Merrifield Avenue Pumping Station. Number one, what kind of maintenance is done at that pumping station, and when is it done? Has there been any testing done on the pumping station? How frequently is that done? And who is trained on running this pumping station? Um, what is the city's plan? You know, we're talking up here about stormwater for the last three years, and Councilman Evans brought up the, uh, Arcadis study. Now, I got an email from, cause I have been asking about this, from Mr. Bolzoni, and it looks to me, based on what he's saying, that we're not going to see anything until at least 2019. Uh, once we confirm, uh, that they can do the mapping, according to this email, and, uh, Anthony Dill from Arcadis, who's doing the study, it's going to take approximately two to three months to complete the digitizing work. Once that is complete, they have to do an analysis of the rates and credit and appeals policy, so that has to be developed, billing options, and that's going to take an additional three months to complete, uh, from my understanding and reading this email. So I agree with Mr. Evans that, you know, we were told two years ago that this thing was going to take nine months, and two years later, we're still in the same position. So I do think we need, uh, a caucus with all of the individuals involved, uh, so that we can get, get an update and get a handle on this, because I, I don't think we're moving fast enough or in the right direction. Um, I also think, based on my conversations over the last month with, uh, really residents in every section of the city, we need a public meeting or a public caucus on the recent storm and the city's response. Because I, I do not fault the fire department. I think they did a great job, police department, or DPW, but there definitely was a communications breakdown someplace. And I'll give you one example. Um, people have experienced thousands of dollars of damage in their basements and in their homes. And I asked multiple times, asked the mayor's office, who from the city is going out and assessing this damage? How is that being done? What is the process? Because we can get reimbursed by the state. I still have not gotten an answer on that. So I don't know if there is a plan, or if it is being done, or what the case is. But I have several questions, and Councilman Donahue brought one of these up in, in the caucus earlier. Who is in charge of emergency management in the city? Who coordinates these efforts? So when we have a major emergency like the flood, who is getting information out to residents? You know, in my opinion, there should have been a press conference. There should have been something in the newspaper, uh, in the news media telling people where to go, what to do, where to file this, this paperwork that's so important. Uh, who is trained to operate the levee system? Are the gates tested? We have several questions about that. And how much damage, uh, in dollar amount was there from the recent storm, and are we submitting this information to PMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association, or agency? And how does this process work? How are residents supposed to know where to go for help, and does damage that occurred to individual homeowners factor into any assessment? So I think that, uh, we need a clear handle on this, and I would like to have a public caucus so that we could get answers. Uh, Mr. Norton, who came earlier, uh, I've been in contact with him and the Pennsylvania American Water Company, because again, the 1,100 blocks of Rundle Street, and really from South Main Avenue, from St. Anne Street, all the way down to Loomis Avenue, the storm drains are clearly inefficient, uh, to handle stormwater during heavy rain events. So again, I asked Mrs. Reed earlier, we need a meeting with the water company, uh, and with city officials to find out what the remedy for that situation is. Uh, Mr. Cerebro and Mr. Besko, who have come here multiple times with their issues, uh, in flooding in Kaiser Valley, uh, tried to set up a meeting, uh, with them and the city engineer and the mayor. Uh, I sent a letter, no reply for the last few weeks. Um, I did receive an email, uh, or was copied on an email from Mr. Poshus to Kay Garvey, the mayor's secretary and Mrs. Reed, August 24th, that states that, uh, Mr. Poshus did meet with Mr. Besko, and he is doing research on the information that, uh, Mr. Besko provided, and he will get back to him with his findings. Mr. Evans brought up a, a program, and I, I think it's so important and will be so beneficial to the city, the See, Click, Fix Initiative. So if we can, as a council, send a letter again to the mayor, uh, to find out, number one, if he is on board with this idea or not, and if he is on board with it, are we, you know, moving forward with it, or aren't we? Because it's been months now since Mr. Evans had, uh, brought that information to this council. We had a public caucus on it and a presentation, and I think quite frankly, that, uh, it would allow the city to hold our departments accountable, and it would provide, uh, great communication between the government and the people. Now, on to the, uh, the coffee shop lease with Mr. Hinton. While we were on recess during the month of August, there was an article in the Scranton Times, uh, regarding Mr. Hinton, who was the Director of Licensing Inspections and Permits. And the article had to do with, uh, Mr. Hinton entering into a lease in July of 2017 with the Scranton Recreation Authority to run a coffee shop out of a building at Naug Park. The lease is for 12 years, with the first two years being rent-free, and then $3,000 a year thereafter. First of all, let me say that, you know, I think this idea might be a good one, in all reality. Just not with a member of the mayor's cabinet running it, especially the Director of Licensing Inspections and Permits. I have to preface my comments tonight by saying that this is not anything personal against Mr. Hinton, but the mere appearance of a city employee using a building on city property at a city-owned park to run a coffee shop should have been enough for Mayor Courtwright and members of the Recreation Authority Board to say no way to this idea. The mayor has been silent on this issue. I approached him, uh, I called his office, sent an email, no reply, and then I approached him at, uh, up at McLean Park, uh, for a grand opening of the park a few weeks ago, and he told me it was a personnel issue, and he, uh, walked away from me. This shouldn't be a surprise to anyone who has been following city government over the last five years. The mayor is using the excuse that this is a personnel issue. Ladies and gentlemen, that is absolutely ridiculous. Mr. Hinton is not covered under any bargaining unit. He serves at the pleasure of the mayor and his cabinet. Therefore, this is the mayor's problem. If this was so transparent, why didn't anyone on council besides, I think, Mr. Evans know about it? If this was so transparent, and the mayor believed that he should open up something, a coffee shop in that building at Naug Park, why wasn't there a major public announcement, a press conference, a press release, some communication between the mayor, the Recreation Authority, and city council? There was zero zip. So again, they talk about transparency, I don't see it. The city's ethics code is very, very clear on this issue. And I did ask our solicitor to provide his opinion on whether Mr. Hinton violated any portion of the city's ethics code, and Mr. Menora agreed that, uh, he did violate the city's ethics code. Now, there is a question obviously of, uh, whether or not the state ethics code preempts the city's ethics code. But regardless, as my colleague said, of any of that, this is not right. The question of the legality of it is still unclear, but it doesn't make it right. It's, in my opinion, still unethical, that we have a city employee using city property to run a coffee shop. Now, Mr. Hinton's counsel sent me a letter, and I'd just like to go through this very quickly. Uh, he makes several points in this letter addressing my concern about the ethics, uh, possible ethics violations. Uh, his counsel says, "No person from the public, city council, or the authority raised any objection to the lease agreement prior to its execution." My response to that would be, how would we provide an objection when we didn't know about it, or at least I didn't know about it until I read it in the paper? It also says, "Mr. Hinton, uh, met with Councilman Wayne Evans," which he just addressed at the former Comfort Station and discusses plans. Apparently, this is supposed to be enough to satisfy the disclosure requirement in our ethics code. Um, he should have disclosed it to the full council, not just one member. It also says, "No person objected to his plans or the lease, nor did anyone advise him. They thought the lease was viol, uh, violating of the Scranton, city of Scranton's ethics code." That should have been up to, number one, the solicitor of the Recreation Authority and Mr. Hinton. The State Ethics Commission always, uh, commits to giving advisory opinions on these type of issues, and so would the Ethics Board, and they did not do that. He also says, "Mr. Hinton has already spent considerable funds on the rehabilitation of the property. After execution of the lease, nobody from the city of Scranton or the city council objected while Mr. Hinton spent thousands of dollars and countless hours of labor during his off-hours to renovate the property." Again, how would we have known even to object? I would have objected to this the moment that I knew about it. He also says in his letter to me that many public officials have side businesses or second jobs that don't interfere with their public jobs, and I can understand that, and that is true. Everyone up here has a second job. It's just not running a coffee shop out of a public building on public land. He also says that, "Mr. Hinton acknowledges that being a public official warrants close scrutiny of his conduct. Council should withhold judgment on this transaction until it learns all the facts." Now, his counsel says that, uh, I asked several questions of Mr. Hinton. I have a letter here that I sent, uh, a few weeks ago. Mr. Hinton's reply to my letter, uh, in an email to Mrs. Reed, our city clerk, is, uh, really arrogant and troubling. Um, he says in his email to Mrs. Reed, he's more than happy to talk to, uh, or have me talk to his attorney, and also is more than welcome to stop for a coffee, uh, when his shop is open. Um, this is not only extremely arrogant, but it's completely unprofessional and unbecoming of a cabinet member of the city of Scranton, but it is not surprising. Uh, Mr. Hinton has a history of being arrogant and quite frankly aloof in his position as Licensing and Inspections Director. And let me reference a recent decision and a recent newspaper article with the headline, "Judge Rules Scranton's Revoking of Contractor's License Without a Hearing Violated Due Process Rights." I just want to read very quickly from, uh, hearing in federal court. "In January of 2014, Patrick Hinton was appointed to serve as the Director of Licensing Inspections and Permits for the city of Scranton. Prior to accepting this position, Hinton had worked as a drug and alcohol counselor and as a wellness coordinator for the Scranton School District. Hinton had no previous direct work experience with the Department of Licensing Inspections and Permits before assuming the position of Director of that office. Owing to this lack of prior experience, Hinton also began his tenure as Director of the Department of Licensing Inspections and Permits without the benefit of a comprehensive institutional background and knowledge regarding the operations of that office. Thus, for more than a year after he assumed these duties, Hinton was unaware of material information pertaining to the city's licensing and license revocation procedures." And then it goes on to list all of these examples. "Finally, Hinton was not informed that the city's own ordinance has called for graduated penalties for contractors, beginning with suspension of licenses before proceeding to license revocations." This is a matter that's in federal court, and in my estimation is going to cost the city a ton of money. Um, so, the bottom line here is that, you know, the fact that the mayor would hire someone for this important position, because he is a political ally rather than a competent qualified individual who knows what he's doing in that position is quite frankly a disgrace. And there have been other instances, from my understanding, where the city has lost at the magisterial level, and Mr. Hinton is costing the city money. "In light of Mr. Hinton's coffee shop deal, uh, Mayor Courtwright's silence and utter disregard for our ethics code, I have decided, and I've talked to my colleagues in the caucus, that it's time for the city's ethics code to be updated and to be expanded." So over the past few weeks, I've looked at how other cities across Pennsylvania deal with their ethics. I found Reading, Pennsylvania's ethics code to be extremely comprehensive and well-written. I provided a copy of that ordinance to my colleagues and to Solicitor Menora in the caucus tonight. I also, last week, spoke to Mr. Ed Stock, who was an attorney for the Reading Ethics Board, and we discussed how their system works. So, I would like to use their ethics code as a model and as a guide for updating our ethics code. And I would like to read for a second what their ethics code says right in the, uh, first paragraph. Their declaration of policy says the following, "The proper operation of a democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people. That government decisions and policy be made in the proper channels of governmental structure, that public office not be used for personal gain, and that the public have confidence in the integrity of its government. Each official or employee of the city must be constantly on guard against conflicts of interest. No official or employee should be involved in any activity which might be seen as conflicting with his or her responsibilities to the city. The people of Reading have a right to expect that their representatives act with independence and fairness towards all groups and not favor a few individuals or themselves." So there, there's one or two paragraphs that I would like include it in our updated ethics code, and I think that applies partly to the situation that we find ourselves in with Mr. Hinton. And again, let me say about my comments, this is not a personal vendetta. Mr. Hinton in his email said that this was a personal vendetta against him by myself. This is not a personal vendetta. I would be bringing this issue up if it was any other employee in City Hall. Ladies and gentlemen, this, as my colleagues have said tonight, is not right. Now, one of the most interesting parts of Reading's Code of Ethics was the inclusion of campaign finance reform. And I also mentioned in the caucus tonight that as a part of our updating, uh, of the ethics code, I really think we should include campaign finance reform as an arm of that. The perception of, that the people have in the city of Scranton, in my experience over the last five years, is that our government relies heavily on pay-to-play politics. The way that it usually works, in my estimation, is that lawyers flood the mayor's campaign coffers, not just Mayor Courtwright, but mayors going back decades, and then they line their pockets with taxpayer money, and eventually land some kind of legal work. People have grown tired, not just in Scranton but across the country, of a small group of people who can write large checks, having so much influence and control over elected officials. We need to look no further than the recent sewer sale here in the city of Scranton. Mr. Abrahamson, who sued a member of council over asking for receipts, $200,000 payments for the parking authority deal and the sewer authority deal, and he is the mayor's, one of his largest campaign donors. This perception that Scranton's motto is, "It's not what you know, it's who you know," is bad for business. What do outside businesses think if they might be interested in moving here when they read our local newspaper and see all of the different antics that go on here? It's my belief that it is time to put the power and influence back into the hands of the average, middle-class citizen. Those people who don't have enough money to write a $5,000 or $10,000 check, but who would still like the ear of local politicians. So I'm proposing that we follow Reading's lead, and that we set limits for campaign contributions in the city of Scranton. For too long, it's been open season for deep-pocketed donors and special interests in this area, and it is time for that to end. As I mentioned to my colleagues and shared with them, um, some of the campaign limits, I won't go through all of them, but what this would do would set a limit for campaign contributors for both election years and non-election years. So for individuals, you would only be able to donate to a candidate up to $2,600, and so on and so forth. So again, I think we're putting the power back into the people's hands. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that City Council directs Attorney Menora to draft legislation amending and updating the city of Scranton's ethics code to also include campaign finance reform.
I'll second that motion.
On the question?
And on the question, I would ask that we use Reading's ethics code and campaign finance reform as a model and as a guide, and that we follow, uh, the spirit of that law.
Anyone else? All those?
Sorry, I'm gonna question real quick. I just would like to say that I just couldn't agree with the comments that Mr. Gahan just made.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so will.
And finally, just, uh, another matter of concern when we talk about our own Board of Ethics. When you look at what Reading does, they take their Code of Ethics seriously. They convene, I believe, in June or July, they, uh, announce a, or elect a chairperson and a vice-chairperson, and there's several mechanisms in here, uh, that clearly show that Reading takes, uh, campaign finance reform and ethics seriously. The way that we have it currently set up, I don't think we're taking ethics seriously in the city of Scranton. For example, last year, I had inquired with the mayor's office on why the terms of all of the people who are currently listed on the city of Scranton's Board of Ethics have expired. I never got an answer to that. I never got an answer to that question. So we have five people who are appointed by the mayor to the Ethics Board, and all of their terms have expired. Back in 2001, as a addition to the research that I did, notice was given that the Board of Ethics in May of 2001 had been appointed, formed, and convened. And then it lists all of the different mechanisms that you can take to file a complaint. To my knowledge, that's never been done, so I don't even know if the current board that we have is even legitimate. So again, I do think that this is so important, I look forward to working with Solicitor Menora and my colleagues to updating this ethics code, and finally, in the City of Scranton, taking ethics serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two items I wanted to bring up. We did receive a report from Dave Bolzoni last month. If you recall, about a year or so ago, Councilman Evans and myself worked with Neighbor Works to put together a first-time homebuyers program where they could also use money for down payment assistance or for rehabilitation. We did receive a nice report in August, and it listed, so far, there's been 33 applicants who had applied for this program. The vast majority of them have already closed, and they're right in, right in our community. A number of them on West Side, a lot in West Side, South Scranton, North Scranton, the Hill. So this program really is a huge success so far. I think it's something we need to continue to fund, hopefully funded on an increased level. But just looking through here, these are many of the streets and neighborhoods within our city that do need that little bit of a facelift, where people could get a little bit of money to fix up their homes when they're buying them, and it puts properties in the homes of homeowners instead of possibly out-of-town landlords that may be coming in and purchasing the properties otherwise. So this is very good news, it's something I think we need to continue to fund and continue to push. Lastly, I just want to comment, Councilman Evans brought up the Scranton bypass. I wasn't planning on addressing this issue, but I have to disagree with some of what was mentioned. Many of us who live in the City of Scranton dread that travel on Interstate 81, so something certainly needs to be done. Personally, I think widening the road to three or four lanes would be a better solution than having a bypass around the city, but something needs to be done. Anyone who travels that road knows how much of a disaster it is, it's impossible to get around. It's probably one of the most frequent complaints that I hear from people in our area is the amount of congestion on Interstate 81. So something certainly needs to be done. I think a bypass should be explored, not saying I'm for it, but I'm saying it's something that should certainly be explored, and if that's the only way to alleviate a lot of that traffic on Interstate 81, it's something that should move forward. But like I said, I would prefer to see the road widened so traffic can move through quickly.
Yeah, and to chime in on that as well, I'm just not sure why they'd want to invest $170 million when they can just repair the northeast extension on the turnpike and make it free. And that would go from Pittston to Clark Summit, the road's already there. Kind of the same.
I did attend the public hearing that was held in council chambers in August about them closing down to do light repairs, closing down the Music Street exit, and one of the things that was brought up in that hearing was that bidding, bid work for, bid work for a redesign of the entire highway has just gone out. I mean, that's not the way it was explained, it's still eight to 10 years down the road, but they did, PennDOT did put out requests for proposals to get a complete redesign from the Luzerne County Line, at least through Dunmore.
And that's the worst part, yeah, that's the worst part, too. I know that all the new bridges that went in are designed to hold at least three lanes of traffic, which is good. Unfortunately, infrastructure does take time, eight to 10 years is a long time to wait, so anything that can be done to alleviate, alleviate the problem, I think, is certainly, certainly warrant it. That is all.
5B, for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2019.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C, for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 125, 2017, an ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2018 by transferring $50,000 from account number as noted, Non-Departmental Expenditures OPEB Trust Fund, to account number as noted, Non-Departmental Expenditures Shade Tree Commission, to provide funding for additional tree maintenance costs and the preparation of a basic plan on how to deploy additional trees in the downtown section of the city.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, as I mentioned in caucus, I just like to know how much would be left in the OPEB trust fund after transferring this money.
Anyone else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D, for introduction and ordinance acknowledging the adoption by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, of the Pennsylvania Fireworks Law, Act 43 of 2017, acknowledging that the fireworks law prohibits the igniting or discharge of consumer fireworks on public or private property without the express permission of the owner, providing that the City of Scranton does not grant permission for anyone to ignite or discharge consumer fireworks on the streets or sidewalks of the City of Scranton or property owned by the City of Scranton, including, without limitation, all of the city-owned parks and public buildings, directing that the City of Scranton provide certified copies of the ordinance to all magisterial district justice, excuse me, judges within the city, providing for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E, for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute a deed of easement and right of way between the City of Scranton and the Pennsylvania American Water Company, granting to the Pennsylvania American Water Company the easement, right of way, and rights as are set forth below with respect to the property, which deed of easement and right of way are attached heretofore as Exhibit A.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, Mr. Dobson asked where this was, and it is, according to the legislation, near Well Street in North Scranton and Leggett's Creek.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F, for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a permanent easement agreement and temporary construction easement between the City of Scranton and La Guana Heritage Valley Authority for real estate owned by the City of Scranton as more fully described in Exhibit A attached heretofore.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, again, on the question, Mr. Dobson asked about this piece as well, and I'm looking at the map, it is in the area of Parker Street in North Scranton.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G, for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Highland Associates to perform the City of Scranton Municipal Building Facilities Condition Assessment.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5H, for introduction and resolution, appointment of Robert J. Morris, 648 Whale Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A508, as the alternate number-two member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Scranton. Mr. Morris will fill the alternate number-two position that was vacated by Robert Gatton's when he became a regular member of the board by Resolution Number 56, 2016. Mr. Morris will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Gatton's, which expires on July 1, 2020.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5I, for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a grant application by the City of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant, Gaming Funds Monroe County, in the amount of $464,239 for paving project in the Fawnwood Heights Development in West Scranton.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, I do have a question about this, and I brought it up in the caucus. I remember that with the city's 2018 paving project, a lot of these streets were on there, so I'm assuming that they were taken off. So if we could get an update on the, these cities' paving project and get a clarification on that, so is that why we're asking for grant funding, because we took those off the original list? Thank you.
Just to reiterate, I know I spoke about this before, this development has some of the worst roads within our city, and they also pay some of the highest taxes in the city, so this is long overdue for the folks who live in the Fawnwood section.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5J, for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with KS Engineers PC for the City of Scranton Traffic Sign Management System.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. We discussed this in caucus as well, but I do have several questions on this. I would like, if we could, have Mr. Bolzoni come into a caucus and go through some of these questions. One of the questions that I have is, in his memo, he says that, "As a budgetary consideration, the city may contemplate staffing needs since the sign inventory is now managed by one full-time and one part-time employee." So I'd like a better understanding as we approach the 2019 budget. I mean, we're getting close enough where I think we can assume that they, that's either going to be in there or not be in there, so I'd like to know that before we delve into this. And then, we're also seeking a DCD multimodal transportation grant to fund 70% of the project, so our match, if we got the grant, would be 81, roughly $81,200. If we don't get the grant, I think we're just going to fund the entire cost out of our debt service account fund balance, so that would require council approval, so I have some questions about that as well. So I think Mr. Bolzoni could probably clear a lot of that up, and I would like to hear from the DPW on this and what their thoughts are, especially, I know Gene Reed has been running the sign department for the last number of years, so he would have a lot of experience in that, so if we could set that up in the next week or two, that'd be great.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5K, for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant, Gaming Funds Monroe County, in the amount of $70,003, to be used for the K-9 unit, for the purchase of a K-9 vehicle, and a dual-purpose K-9.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.